Next item, the executive hires, Dr. Ward. No items tonight, okay? Item six is the Board Presidents' Report. Six A, consideration for approval of superintendent's yearly appraisal. For the last fifteen years, Temple ISD has appraised our superintendent in public in the spirit of transparency. And this is something we do annually at this time of the year. And so this is a appraisal that the board has put together, and I will read it into the record now. December 2022 through December 2023, Temple ISD Superintendent appraisal. The Temple ISD Board of Trustees Superintendent appraisal of Dr. Bobby Ott is based on a one-year timeframe from the last appraisal from December 2022 through December 2023. The format for this review is an overview provided by Dr. Ott to the board members. The items are categorized by five domains. Board and community relations, district management, student achievement, human resources, and district communications. Each board member completed a grading process of each domain using a one-to-five scale, included their comments and perspectives. Domain one is board and community relations. The average rating among the board members is 4.8. The relationship between Bobby Ott and, and then these are comments too, that the board has made on the appraisals that I'll be reading. The relationship between Bobby Ott and the board is solid. He is open and seeks suggestions concerning the issues facing our faculty, staff, and most importantly, our students. By actively engaging with the school board, Dr. Ott ensures alignment on key educational objectives and policies, promoting a unified vision for TISD. Moreover, his commitment to transparency and accessibility has strengthened ties with the community, fostering a sense of trust and shared responsibility for the success of Temple schools. His involvement with the ministerial alliance has given the district yet another way to connect with an extremely important subset of Temple families. I appreciate how visible Dr. Ott is in our community. He has done an excellent job getting to know community leaders within businesses, schools, and churches. I also hear from others how much they appreciate that he stands for all educators and students. Domain two is district management, and the average rating was 4.8. The district has done an excellent job with facilities and growth, excellent job of pre-planning for future growth. Brandy Stanford is a wonderful asset. She is always ahead of the game financially. She has taken our strengths and is continuing to build to make us stronger. TISD continues to maintain its reputation of physical responsibility by receiving a clean audit and an A in first accountability. This department not only keeps us in compliance with state and federal funding requirements, but also looks for ways to maximize earnings and fund essential projects such as school nutrition equipment replacements, stadium maintenance, and correcting drainage issues. As far as facilities and planning are concerned, I think Temple is set up for success. There is such careful planning behind every decision. Once again, the relationships that have been fostered have opened up opportunities to work with builders and landowners to maximize growth that benefits the school and community. Domain three, student achievement, the average rating 4.4. I am so pleased that despite changes in testing and accountability ratings, this department achieved some impressive gains. Improvement was especially needed in the area of EOCs, and fortunately, we saw the desired improvements. It's also welcome news that the number of our students earning IVCs has increased. In my opinion, one of the best opportunities that came as a result of the Esser grant funds was hiring a behavioral counselor who headed up a team to work with some of our students who have issues that irregular guidance counselors cannot necessarily address during the course of a regular school day. Nice improvement in attendance. Attendance has a direct impact on student achievement. Continued work to enhance learning academically is paying off. It is never a perfect science and continually changing, but our leadership team and staff have and are learning to bend and flex where possible to help our students achieve. Regarding behavior, the emphasis on proactive measures, measures has led to a more supportive, inclusive school environment. In my mind, this is an extremely hard area to improve in, and I believe we have done a terrific job. Domain four is human resources, and the average rating was 4.8. I feel that there is such an outstanding balance of diversity in leadership in our district that our teacher retention is tops. Our system is set up in a way that assists new teachers grow, and they know that they have our support. HR is actively implementing strategies to ensure leadership stability in TISD, reflecting the commitment to content, continuity, and effective administration. Our district is well-positioned to fill vacancies and encourage the diversity of our staff. In addition to fostering leadership traits and encouraging employee advancement and attendance, they're also finding ways to better support new teachers and to financially reward through TIA those members of our staff who meet rigorous effective measurements. With Donna Ward at the helm, HR has truly made a complete transformation. Along with Adrian and David and the HR staff, our ISD employees are truly supported and cared for in all ways possible, whether it is personal or professional. Domain five, district communication, average rating 4.8. As usual, the communications department continues to provide excellent coverage of our district achievements, both big and small. They intentionally maintain relationships with media outlets, and they assure that entities who support TISD do not go unnoticed or unappreciated. They stay on top of marketing opportunities, and they keep district messaging clear and consistent. I'm always impressed with our district communications department. I think they do a phenomenal job keeping our parents and community informed. They have worked hard to establish solid relationships with local media, and it's paid off tremendously. I like the transparency in our reporting of incidents. I felt this, that, that this effort has earned trust within our community. TISD's social media presence has experienced significant growth, providing for an effective platform for communication and community engagement. The district's image is further enhanced by a beautiful logo refresh symbolizing a modern and vibrant identity. Dr. Ott is always looking for and implementing ways to support all of our staff. His sign-off, "Your biggest fan," is not just a saying, he means it and he shows it. And the superintendent's contract, past annual superintendent's review, at the conclusion, at the completion of the review, it will be recommended by the Temple ISD Board of Trustees to extend Dr. Ott's contract. Members, is there anything you'd like to add? Dr. Ott, is there anything you'd like to say?
After the vote.
Yeah, that's true. I guess we do have to vote on that. Members, this does require a vote?
I don't want to make any assumptions.
Move for approval. Motion by Mr. Gaines.
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. All right, it's official now.
Okay. I'll make a few comments. First of all, I want to thank the Board of Trustees for the, the evaluation. You know, I guess this is going into year six, and you would think that having your evaluation done this many times would get a little more comfortable, and it certainly doesn't. It's just, it's a very uncomfortable thing, at least for me. But I'll just talk frankly and say, there has been four superintendents that have left the area in the last nine months. And so I'll just be honest and tell you, I've been asked, hey, are you, you know, are you up next? Are you leaving and so forth? And the standard reply that I have given is the last job that I've applied for is the one I'm sitting in today. And that is a fact. And the reason why is simple. I truly love the team I'm on. I mean, I really do. The, the board team, the leadership team, the principals, the staff, the, the children and families that we have the opportunity to serve. I mean, it's just, you, you can go home every day and feel like you made a real difference. And man, that's important. I mean, it's really important. And then, of course, the community that we represent. So I'm just very grateful for each of you as board members and leadership team and just the, all the different people in this community that I have the chance to work with on a day-to-day basis. So thank you very much for this evaluation.
Thank you. Our next future items discussion, any issues the board would like to bring up at a future board meeting? Okay. C is important dates, and I'll turn it over to Dr. Ott.
Well, I don't have many. February 19th is a holiday, and then we have our school board retreat, February 22nd. I believe that retreat will include an HR update. And then we're going to really focus on STEM, since we've had Meta as our, I guess, recent partner. We've really had a chance to stand up that program, so we're going to go visit Thornton and Travis, is that correct? As part of that tour, and we'll have a bus here to take all of us and visit classrooms on that day. And then we have a school board policy meeting, the 28th, and a facilities meeting, the 29th. And I believe the, even though this says the facilities meeting is in the admin building, I think we're going to really try to move that, is that correct, over to the Sampson Howard construction trailer? Okay, because I know January didn't work out, so. Yeah, weather permitting, but we, we'll change that, and we'll try to move it out there to Sampson Howard. If you haven't driven by it, I think you're going to get really excited about what's going on out there. And I see cloud out in the audience, and really appreciate your work on that, so.
All right, item seven, consent items, items A through F1. What is the pleasure of the board to deal with these items?
I move that we approve items 7A through 7F, consent items, all together as one item.
Okay, motion by Ms. Gallin.
Second the motion.
Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Motion passes. Thank you. Item eight, action items, A, human resources. Dr. Ward, one consideration for approval of the 2024-2025 Temple ISD calendar.
Yes, so tonight, well, first of all, thank you. Tonight, we will be, I'll be presenting the 24-25 calendar to you for approval. It's hard to believe we're already talking about that. I feel like we just started school yesterday. And so we had a lot of great feedback on our calendar for this school year. So we did not make significant changes to the calendar for this next school year, because our staff really liked it. And so all of our holidays will remain the same. So November 25th through 29th is Thanksgiving. December 20th starts our, our Christmas break. Spring break is March, the week of March 10th. And of course, we did take off for Veterans Day, Martin Luther King, and President's Day this year. The goal was to, to have a workday or, I mean, a workday or a day off, a holiday at least every three weeks to give our teachers time to refresh and recoup. And so it worked out well with the holidays and the way they spread out, so we're excited about that. And we have three days that we can get a waiver, which Mr. Hoggleberg will do at the beginning of next school year, and count those days as instructional days. They'll be district professional development days. And so those days are October 31st, January 6th, and March 17th. You will also notice on the calendar in red, there's a hashtag before certain dates. So for example, November 26th. So according to House Bill 3033, we now have to designate non-business days on our calendar. So those are days that we are not available, that do not count towards any time that we have, say, we get a, a, a request for records, right? So a non-business day would not count towards those days that we have to get those, that information collected. And so that's added to this calendar this year. But other than that, everything's pretty much the same.
Thank you, Dr. Ward. Members, any questions about the calendar? This does require approval.
A motion.
Motion by Mrs. Cook.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Myers. All in favor signify by saying aye. Same sign, the pose, the ayes have it. Motion passes.
Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you. Item B, academics, B1, consideration for approval of resource adoption of K through 12 science, CTE science, and tech apps.
Good evening, Dr. Ott, President Posey and board members. Over the past five months, the process for our textbook adoption for K-12 science, CTE, and tech apps has been underway. Each committee has concluded our work at the committee level. Our selection committee members have evaluated all of our teacher and student materials. And have also, they have attended our in-district presentations from publishing companies and have evaluated all our materials thoroughly. They spent many hours independently also reviewing those items with our campus colleagues. Materials have been available for preview for anyone interested in reviewing them on each campus. The Temple ISD Textbook Adoption Committee was charged with responsibility of screening, evaluating, and recommending materials for the adoption to the Board of Trustees. Committee members in the textbook committee timeline represented to the board members and approved on October 10th, 2023. So at this time, I would like to recommend, the committee recommends the following instructional materials for your board approval. I led the K-5 team, and we are recommending the Hutton-Mifflin Cart Court for K-5. Dr. Rogers, she led the science team for 68 and 912. 68 science, we're recommending Savis. 912, we're recommending McGraw-Hill. Ashley Jones, she led the committee for tech apps. And for tech apps, she's, the committee is recommending ICEV. For CTE, we are adopting the following list of publishers. Sendage, ICEV, NHA, Goodheart, Wilcox, and Code HS. So at this time, I would ask, do you have any questions?
Members, any questions? Does require approval.
I'll move for approval.
Motion by Mrs. Myers. Seconded by Mrs. Davis. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign. The ayes have it. Thank you very much, it's adopted.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Item two is presentation of December EOC results.
I am very excited to say I will not be speaking on this area. We have invited our proud principals here, and so we have Dr. Jason Mayo at Temple High School, and Ms. Tricia Mitchell of Edwards Academy, and they're here to share their EOC results from December.
Okay. Board of Trustees, Dr. Ott, thank you for having us this evening. As we get to brag about our schools, as you can see, lots of green, lots of growth. And I want to give a shout-out to the teachers, the counselors, the coaches. It was all hands on deck to get these results, we're very proud of them. So I have a cart. I call it the treat trolley. And I'll go around, I'll pass out snacks and treats to teachers door-to-door, and we were able to celebrate as a campus with breakfast tacos the other day, and it was exciting to celebrate all their hard work. Three things I think went into our results. Number one, teachers knew their students. They built relationships with them. They knew where they were at academically, they had trackers, they had predictors, and they were able to provide targeted instruction to the students. Number two, we had good systems in place. Whether that was small group pullouts, using our resources with fidelity, tracking. Oh.
There you go.
I'm just, I'm blowing through it. Good systems in place to where we were able to track and make sure there are no concerns or issues. And if there were any gaps, we were able to provide intervention for them. And number three, we cared and provided support for our teachers. You know, they work hard, teaching a tested subject area is tough, there's always a lot of eyes on you. And we want to motivate our teachers. So every week, we write about thirty personalized notes for our teachers, and we hand those out. It's cool when you go in to do walkthroughs and you see them posted on the door or wall. And then we also, you know, support our teachers. So going forward, you can expect three things. We're going to know where our students are at academically, we're going to provide support to them, we're going to track them. I personally met with students the other day in the auditorium. Ms. Myers, I believe Preston was in there. Then I'm going to track their progress, and I'm going to provide interventions and incentives for them when they meet their goal. We're going to continue supporting our teachers. And number three, we have good systems and processes in place to encompass the entire accountability system, CCMR points, academic growth, EOC performance, all that to make sure that when we are tracking, we're trending in the right direction, and we're able to provide support and intervention when there's gaps. So those are the things you can expect when we go forward. Very proud of our results, a lot of hard work went into it, and excited about the upcoming test administration. So I'm going to turn it over to Tricia Mitchell, who's going to brag about Edwards Academy and all the great things that they did this go around.
Thank you, Dr. Mayo. I just want to start with saying, our students and staff, they just continue to amaze me at Edwards. The data you see up here represents a majority of retesters that we have at our campus. But we also have first-time testers that are represented in this data as well, because if they finish a credit, then they're able to go ahead and test in December. We've consistently improved passing percentages over the last few years. And our scores this past December were well above state averages in approaches and meets grade level. We've had several students that had retested seven and eight times, and not only passed in December, but they met grade level. So what is working? Uh-oh. What is working? Our staff has a cohesive, cohesive vision and action plan. Our campus goal was to ensure every student grows. Since this past summer, we worked to create an action plan and have worked that plan. We created a positive culture, and we build relationships. Our students want to do well because of the relationships our teachers make with them. Our teacher goals, our teacher goal sets with our students provides incentives and enriched experiences for being present and engaged in their EOC classes. Part of our action plan is targeted data analysis. Our students take short-cycle assessments every two weeks, and that data is recorded on a student growth tracker, which is reviewed during our PLC meetings. An example of our growth tracker is pictured on the slide. We have also embraced small group or one-on-one instruction, as you can see in the picture. Students that do not meet grade level on short-cycle assessments are pulled for small group instruction or one-on-one instruction. In addition, if a student is absent from an EOC class and misses instruction, then they are pulled for small group, so they can't get out of it. Lastly, we focused on building vocabulary with increased use of visuals in the classroom as pictured. We also have a word of the day each morning, and this focus is particularly important for our emergent bilingual students. Oftentimes, the STAR EOC tests are what keeps an emergent bilingual student from a diploma. We have been successful in getting our EB students to pass these exams and receive diplomas. Looking forward, we are continuing to work our plan, but we have to focus on planning lessons, since we only have ten short weeks to prepare them compared to fourteen weeks last semester. We are encouraging more student discourse with the use of universal prompts, which is asking questions to get students to extend and justify their thinking, as pictured on the slide. I want to thank the board and Dr. Ott for the support of Edwards Academy, because we couldn't do it without all of y'all. But we love what we do at Edwards, and we're just super happy with our results that we had in December.
Thank you very much. Board, are there any questions with the presentation? All right, thank y'all. Thanks for everything y'all do.
Thank you.
Item three, presentation of the 2022-2023 District Annual Report. Dr. Adams.
Yes, Ms. Parks, can you pull up the other presentation?
Thank you, they, they said it so well. You didn't need to hear that from me, aren't they proud principals? So it's my pleasure to present the District Annual Report. This is a required report that we have to do annually. Much of the information you have already heard before, so I'm going to try to move through that quickly. But appreciate Ms. Amy Armstrong, our Director of Accountability and School Improvement, for assisting in the, in the production of this presentation. So we will review the following items that are required here. So we'll talk about post-secondary institutions, the TAPER report, financial report and such as we go through. So the first one is our TAPER report. It was, our Texas Academic Performance Report was released just this last month. And so we're required to, to share that information with you. Be in, keep in mind that we shared that information in August. So in August, I always show you the scores and how our students did. We had strong performance and grade level performance. There's a link to it here if you'd like to review it, but I don't want to go through that all again, since we already shared with that. Also, just want to give you a report on our post-secondary progress of our students. So based on what the data that the state is able, able to access for us, we are able to report that almost forty percent of our high school students at, at Temple High School entered either a two-year college or a four-year college. Many of the students choose Temple College as their, as their choice, but also A&amp;M, Tarleton, Texas State, UT, Sam Houston, and Texas State Technical Colleges are where primary, where our students primarily choose to go for post-secondary degrees. Most of our Edward students entered Temple College as their preferred choice. And then about two-thirds of the students, it's difficult, if, if the institution doesn't provide that information, it's difficult to track it. But we also had students who entered the military and entered the workforce immediately after graduation. In terms of our financial and accreditation status, this data, this report was shared with you by Ms. Stanford in December. And so just reminder that we had no material weaknesses in that report. We received a superior rating, and we were accredited. We also are required to share any violent crimes or incidents that were, not crimes, incidents, sorry, let me use the right words, incidents that occurred. And so this is a list of all the incidences that are tracked with, with Mr. Hoggleberg's area. So we had five incidences in the previous school year. And, and so Eric's done a great job working with our SROs and with our staff to really train on that as well. Our safe, safe student speak-up policies continue to work and, and work very well. But as you know, the vaping is, is a bit of a challenge there, and so that's where the majority of those incidences came from.
So I think it's important, because you go back, when you hear the word violent, you don't always associate vaping with violence.
Right, but that is how it's, how it's.
But that is coded that way, so. So I just want you to put that in perspective.
It's a controlled substance is the incident, but it's not violent. But that's the way they deem their report.
Student code, we don't, but as far as the state reporting, they list that under violent criminal incidents.
Yes.
So just understanding that that's.
Required to report it. So then also, we're, I'm required to share with you again, the campus performance objectives and the district performance objectives that you reviewed in, in August and you approved. So we have, we have three areas, academics, behavior, and attendance, as well as our House Bill three goals for literacy, numeracy, and CCMR, college and career and military readiness. So I'm not going to go through all those, I'm just going to click through them. Then I also want to update you on House Bill three, our progress. So how are we doing on our literacy goal? And so we set, you set a literacy goal in August on third grade, increasing the number of students that are on third grade reading level. And so you see that, you see three numbers in that yearly target goals. You see the 22, 23, where we ended up on our STAR at the end of the school year. And then in the middle, you see where we are in the middle of the year as determined by our MAP, which is our universal screener that just measures students' abilities in reading. And then we have our end-of-year target, right? So we're not to the target yet. And so you can see that our middle-of-year target is not where we want it to be at the end of the year, but we still have quite a bit of runway this spring to work with our students and staff. Dr. Watson and I met with every elementary campus principal to review their data and really talked, targeted, and talked with them about how are we really identifying those literacy skills that students need to master? We've, they've adjusted their focus in PLC. And really, we've really seen great growth, especially in the area of second and third grade on grade level, which is, which is very encouraging. So we still have a specific, we still have a little bit to go, though, in our third grade, and so we're continuing to work on that. Many campus principals developed support plans for either specific teachers or for grade levels based on their data. So this data, this middle-of-year data is very helpful and beneficial for us to help us identify which students aren't quite hitting that growth measure, which students are, and where do we need to put our support for the spring? So it's, it's great to help us know where those interventions need to be. In terms of pre-K, pre-K changed their measure. And so last year, you see that at the end-of-year on circle, we were at ninety percent, but now we changed to aims, and so we're at seventy-two percent. So this is a different assessment. So it looks like our student achievement significantly decreased, but our. But our beginning of year assessment was at 30%. And so we've almost doubled, we've, we've doubled that performance. So it is a different measure. I have no concerns about pre-K progress and they'll definitely be kindergarten ready by the end of the year. But that's why it doesn't look, it's a different assessment. This assessment is more aligned to our curriculum and much more specific in the skills that it's measuring. And so we're hoping to hit, hit that end of year target and we're definitely on track if we double our growth one more time, like we did from beginning of year to middle of year. For kindergarten, kindergarten, we're, our end of year map was at 41% and we're at 39. So we're definitely on track. Kindergartners grow a lot in the area of reading in the spring. And so we certainly expect that our students will, will meet that measure and be there by the end of the year. In the terms of first grade, first grade is right on track. They're at 30% and that was where they were at the end of the year. So we are continuing to push that growth for the end of the year. And so we're continually, continuously really looking at first grade to make sure that we increase that grade level. And then our last one is second grade. Second grade showed an inordinate amount of growth. It was in this, I think it's 70% of students hit their growth measure. It was really strong growth. And so we, we expect we should be able to hit that end of year target by the end of the year. So are there any questions about the literacy goals?
Members, any questions?
Okay. So in terms of math, we also set goals for third grade and then we look at each grade level below third grade. And so third grade, our math goal was 38% is our end of year target for math. And currently with our middle of year, we're at 36%, so we're almost to that, to that target. Our, I will tell you, our growth for math this, this fall was extremely high. Every grade level had over 50% of the students hit their growth measure, with many of them in the seventies, with the average growth to be about 70%. And so we had really strong performance in math. We attribute that to the really explicit skill instruction on giving, helping students really understand the process, but also the concrete reasoning behind why we're solving the problem that way. And we've also increased a lot of math talk in classrooms. In terms of pre-K, again, we had that circle assessment, which was at 97% last year. And at the middle of the year for, for math, we're at 78%. Again, that was a different assessment. In circle, we only got one measure. And for aims, we're able to get, to see almost seven or eight skills within there. So it's much more descriptive of what kids are able to do. Rote counting is the thing that really trips them up. It's hard to, to count after 13. It becomes 17. So we're, we're working on that in pre-K so they can get to 13 and then we, and then we struggle. So we'll continue to work on that. But, and so our hope is that we'll hit that end of year target as well. In terms of kindergarten, we were at 45% and we're at 46 right now in the middle of the year. And so aiming for that's 47%, we should be able to hit that measure. In first grade, that's an area that is a little lower than we'd like it to be. And so we've talked to campus principals about targeting the explicit instruction in there, really working on the supports provided for students. And so we have some interventions in place for that. In second grade, we had really strong growth in that area. And so they're at 33%, so we expect to have really strong growth this spring. Is there any questions about the math data?
Any questions?
Okay, the last thing that I'm required to share with you is credit by exam progress. And so credit by exam is when a student takes an assessment either with instruction, with prior instruction or without. And so typically, this specifically occurs in the languages other than English because students have a, a language, you know, a native language. And so they're able to test out of certain things. So we had six students that tested in, in Spanish one. And so it looks kind of odd, right? We had six, did they take multiple tests? Well, remember last year, we talked about the ADVANT testing, where students could take one test and they could earn up to four credits of their, of that language. And so students, six of these students, these six students took an ADVANT assessment and it gave some of them one and two, and it gave four of them Spanish three, based on their prior, prior knowledge. And so they had, we had a really great performance there. This year, we have tested 58 high school students and they've earned at least one Spanish credit, which means they get to take something else. And a lot of times, these are EB students. And so they get to take a different elective instead of Spanish because they've already demonstrated their proficiency. And we're now working on middle school as well. So, so we're looking forward to that. Are there any questions for me?
Members, any questions? All right. Thank you very much. At this time, this item does require a public hearing. The 2022-2023 District Annual Report Hearing is now open. Is there anybody wish that would come forward to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Item C is facility operations. Mr. Boyd, one consideration for approval of the sale of real property listed as Block Two, Temple Heights, locally known as 1100 South 33rd Street, Temple, Texas. Mr. Gaines, I recognize for motion.
I make a motion that we approve the sale of the real property listed at Block Two, Temple Heights, locally known as 1100 South 33rd Street, Temple, Texas, to Tamra for $600,000.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Second by Ms. Suarez and Mrs. Cook will be abstaining from this vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it with, please note that Mrs. Cook did abstain from this vote. Item two, consideration for approval of a contract for the construction of Barnhart and Little River Roads around the Sampson Howard Elementary School campus. Mr. Boyd.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Posey. As you may recall, back in November, you all approved the process of moving the construction of Barnhart and Little River Roads around Sampson Howard out from under the city's contract. We moved that under the district's contract. We did that to expedite the timeline of the project. And at that time, we also increased the GMP to cover the cost of any work associated with it. Since then, Cloud Construction has actually bid that project. And those proposals were taken in January and a summary and an analysis of the pricing is included in your book. So hopefully you've had a chance to review that. Tonight, and I, and I want to say too, we have representatives of both Cloud and BP3 Earthwork with us here tonight. And I appreciate, appreciate their presence. Tonight, we are recommending that the contract for the work for those roads be awarded to BP3 Earthwork in the amount of $7,716,944. This price represents the lowest of the three proposals received. And this is also the shortest time span for completion of the work. So that's a, that's a double win for us. The portion of Barnhart Road from State Highway 95 to the east, on the east side of the campus, to the campus, will be completed by the end of July, prior to the start of school. And that's important because that will accommodate our bus and staff traffic to the dedicated loop and the parking lot that we will have on the northeast side of the campus. The, the remainder of the work on widening Little River Road in Barnhart will be scheduled for completion by March 31st of 2025. The amount of increase in the, in the GMP is more than enough to cover this work, including any necessary change orders, extra charges that'll be assigned to that, any related administrative or construction management fees that, that will be owed to Cloud. So, and also one other point, just to make clear, as we discussed back in November, the city will pay for the entirety of this construction. It will simply be done reimbursing the district on a pass-through basis as part of the contract. Do you all have any questions about that process or what it looks like?
Members, any questions? This vote, Ms. Suarez will abstain from. I recognize Mr. Gaines.
Make a motion for approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Gallin. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The same signs opposed, the ayes have it, the motion passes. Thank you.
Right, thank you.
Item D is finance. D1, consideration to approve new audit services for Temple ISD. Ms. Stanford.
Thank you, Mr. Posey. Good evening. So on February 6th, the district received competitive requests for quotes for the professional services of our external audit firm to perform our TISD financial audit. There were a total of seven proposals that were received and scored by representatives that included TISD finance, TISD purchasing, technology and the communications department. Based on the expertise and experience of this elected firm, the staff that they are going to assign to TISD and the thoroughness of the audit plan presented, including their experience with other ISDs and the experience with single audits which refer to our federal grants, we are recommending Singleton, Clark and Company for board approval tonight. Singleton, Clark and Company has 40 Texas ISD clients and comes very, very highly recommended by all of their clients, including Region 12 and Region 13. I did make sure that I called every single reference on all of the RFQs. The proposal is for the 2324 fiscal year with four possible annual extensions. And a recommendation will be made to the board each year regarding those extensions if we decide to continue with them. Singleton, Clark and Company's engagement will start February 2024, if you guys approve. And the goal is to complete and present the audit report for school board approval in October instead of November annually. And so the total of the fiscal year 2024 audit is 51,000, which is a cost savings of 7,400 compared to last year's fiscal audit. Any questions?
Any questions, members? That's always good news.
It is.
This does require approval.
Move.
Motion by Ms. Suarez.
A second.
Seconded by Mrs. Cook. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed. The motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
E student services, no issues, no items tonight, okay? No items, I guess. No items. Yeah, that's, that's a better one. Yeah, yeah. F is board committee reports. One, facilities committee meeting minutes, January 25th, 2024. Mrs. Davis.
Wrong one.
I'm sorry. Did I read? Oh, I'm sorry.
That's me, my report.
Yes. That's correct. Mr. Gaines, apologize.
The meeting was called to order at 4:00, 6:00 PM. Ms. Parks presented an update on the status of historical markers for Mr. Cornelius Sampson and for Mr. Derwood Howard. Mr. Boyd presented a plan for moving the school nutrition warehouse operations into the cater facility temporarily, while the operation center is being constructed. Dr. Ott discussed the potential future options for cater, once the campus is no longer being utilized. Mr. Boyd discussed the bid process for the sale of Dixon. The committee considered the request for 4C Head Start to explore the potential of their, of their organizations constructing a facility across the street from Meredith Dunbar Campus. Committee members expressed support for this project. Ms. Perez presented an update on the Sampson Howard project. The project is currently on schedule and under budget, which is good news. The meeting was adjourned at 5:13 PM and our next meeting will be held February 29th, 2024 at 4:00 PM.
All right, thank you, Mr. Gaines. Now we'll go to the policy committee meeting on January 24th, 2024. Mrs. Davis.
The meeting was called to order at 4:01 PM. Christine Parks recommended nominees to recognize and illuminate spotlight. The committee agreed to move forward with the recognitions. Update 122 was presented and selected policy changes were highlighted and discussed. Local policy recommendations within update 122 will be presented to the full board tonight for consideration. The meeting was adjourned at 4:42 PM. The next policy committee meeting will be February 28th, 2024 at 4:00 PM.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Davis. B, consideration for approval of board policy update 122. One, update 122 summary. Two, explanatory notes. Three, local policy comparison. And four, legal policy comparison. Charlie.
Good evening. This is policy update 122. And just in general, it has the standard moving the policy pieces around from various policies to another. Cleans up some language, like changes the word accident to collision and the word 10 to the number 10. And then it also removes the remote learning provisions that were added a couple of years ago. And it also removes a lot of the COVID pieces that were in there. And again, as always with these updates, I'll present some of the legal ones for your information and then present the, throughout the, the local ones that will be submitted for your approval. So the first one, we have BBBC legal. And one of the points on this one is that it requires the district to post campaign finance reports for up to five years. So that, that is new. So now those for board elections campaign reports will be on the website for five years as required. Next, BBC. This adds that now board members can be automatically removed from position if there's a guilty plea for various offenses such as bribery, theft of public money and tampering with government records. We have BBD. This one you may hear about is that if the district has a, is found to be not in compliance with the Public Information Act, the Attorney General can require board members to take that training again. So that's also now in law. CCA. This requires that any new bond issues that are passed has to, the district has to have the minimum safety standards met before the district can expend those funds on bonds for whatever it was passed for. So it has to, if, if the district doesn't meet the minimum standards, they have to do that first and then can spend bond money on what it was designed for. We have CK. That is where now it's, it's in law that the district cannot require a person, and this is the COVID pieces, cannot require a person to wear a face mask, can't require a person to be vaccinated and cannot close a school to prevent the spread of COVID-19. Next, we have CKE. And this is the one that requires an armed security officer at all campuses. And so then that, in reference for that, that's now in CKE legal. The first local policy, CQB. This one talks about the security, cybersecurity pieces. And it adds not only just do notification has to happen with breach, it has to happen with a, an incident also. So it just expands our reporting requirements. Next, we have CSA. And this deals with the, the minimum safety standards for districts. And they include things of door, window reinforcement, door numbering, Knox boxes, those type things. And that's what's, when, previously when you hear me talk about district minimum standards, that's what's included in those. Then we have CSA, and this is local. This is another local policy. This is a new policy and it outlines the weekly inspections, the weekly exterior door inspections that we've been doing for almost two years now. Next, another local policy, DC. This, nothing has changed in the policy. They just add a reference to that one. EHB local, another local policy. This requires districts to comply with all rules and standards adopted by the State Board of Education, particularly regarding the dyslexia programs. We have EHBAB legal. Uh, and this requires uh art committees to now uh be complete in their deliberations for when a student enrolls over the summer. Where in the past, we had some days once the school started. Uh, but now if someone enrolls over the summer, that meeting has to be complete prior to the first day of school. And so for an impact for that, there'll be some uh extra special ed staff will need to be on contract a little earlier so that we can satisfy that. We have EHBC Local, and this also combines with EB HCA Local, which is the new policy. It just moves uh language from one policy to another. So that's the only uh piece for that. Next, we have EIE Legal. Uh, and this is where uh a a parent can, up to eighth grade, have a student repeat the grade, or in nine through twelve, they can repeat a class even if they have passed it. Next, we have FD Legal. Um, and this talks about discipline records. Now, one of the things that uh when a student moves to another district and we send uh their records, now we have to include discipline records also, particularly the threat assessment to that. So as well as a dis- a student coming to us, their district has to give us that information is for enrollment. Then we have FEA Local. Uh, this one has for excused absences, a if a student wants to uh go to a place of work for career investigation. We have that for the going to a college. You can have up to two d- two days as a junior, two days as a senior. But now you can also have two days as a junior and senior for a workplace in- investigation. FFCA, another local policy, and this is probably the most significant one in the uh Update One-twenty-two. And this is the one uh that deals with the opioid antagonists. So now we are required to have a policy for uh that administration and that storage. And so for us, this local policy, grade six through twelve is w- what we have. And some of the crop requirements are the the uh district has to have personnel trained for it. And at least one individual has to be on campus that is trained uh during the school day. All our nurses will be trained, all the members of the MERC team will be trained, so we'll have multiple people on campus uh for that. And it has requirements as as well for uh ha- for um making sure that they're, you're checking it so that they're not expired and that they are stored in a secure location. And we did have a grant this year in order to purchase all the Narcan for for that this year. Next, FFB Local, another local policy. And this uh is required that we have a policy on an employee who wants to report a potential threat, they can remain anonymous with that report. FL Local, another local policy. This basically changes the uh remote learning language of accelerated learning committees to accelerated education plans. And that's basically it for that policy. And that is summary of Update One-twenty-two. And again, these local policies are presented for your consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Hagenberg. Members, are there any questions? Recognize Mrs. Cook for a motion.
I move that the board add, revise, and delete the local policies of Update One-twenty-two as presented.
Motion by Mrs. Cook. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Mrs. Ga- Mrs. Gallin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed, the ayes have it, the motion carries. Thank you. With no further business, we're adjourned tonight. Thank you, everybody, for attending.